The results are in. Thanks to you guys' awesome judging. Thanks so much. And Jody has got his high tech, so we've got the results up on the screen. Maybe, there we go. For first place, well, here, let me give you some background, sorry, before, while you adore the poster. Remember, this is third and fourth grade from all over Council Bluff schools, anybody who wants to do it. We had, uh, this is our sixth year doing it, so thank you all for your many years of judging. We appreciate it. We had nine schools participate and sixteen entries this year. The first place, who will earn one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for their school, is Daniel Overall. And don't quote me on this, but I think it's the first time a boy has won first place, and possibly a third grader too, so it's kind of exciting. So, a boy and a third grader. Um, he goes to College View, and we're calling it fluorescent cans. You can't see it quite as well there, but it's much more fluorescent. And I don't think your hot beach showed quite as much either. It's much more fluorescent in person. So hopefully that'll show on the trucks. Second place, who will win a thousand dollars for their school's art department, is Ava Bucy. She's a fourth grader at Titan Hill. Want to drumroll, or what do we wait? There we go. Thanks, Jody. You're awesome. Uh, I'm calling it Waste on Vacation, because the bottle's so excited, he's in the right place, and the other one's not. So, there's a lot of creativity in that one, a lot of color, which is awesome.
Who did that one?
Ava Bucy?
Oh, is it?
It's B-U-S-F-Y. Bucy, okay, there we go. Fourth grader from Titan Hill. Third place, if you're ready for that one?
Yeah, well, no attorneys. So I was like, wait a minute.
Will earn seven hundred and fifty dollars for their school's art department. That is Kylie Sharp. She's a fourth grader at Titan Hill also. And last year and this year, we both had two schools win two places, the same, one school win the same, two places, which is kind of exciting. Uh, and I'm calling it striped background, because it's fun, it's colorful, and they're putting all the good stuff in their recycle bin. So, we're excited about that. That's third place, and Kylie Sharp. Fourth place will win five hundred dollars for their school's art department is Cameron Hosick, or Hosick, H-O-S-I-C-K, fourth grader at Edison, and it's a fill-me-up for a recycling bin. So, again, thank you all for your participation. The schools will get their checks, and the kids will get a vinyl little mini poster on May nineteenth, and the truck, a recycling truck will debut with all four new posters at the Celebrate CB Parade on May twentieth. So, thanks so much for your help and participation. We appreciate it, and hope you guys still enjoy it. If you have any feedback about anything, let us know. Thanks so much.
That's very fun. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the good work you do for the city, so.
Thank you.
All right, rental housing?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, we're here today to give you a, an update on the progress of the rental housing program. Um, you've all received all the number crunching that we've done, and percentages and everything along those lines. Um, as you all know, August first of two thousand fifteen, we did go live with the active rental housing program. At that time, in the two thousand fifteen cycle, we had registered a little bit over ninety-four hundred rental units under the self-registration program. Uh, during that time, we also estimated that, we thought there might be between five hundred and a thousand, um, rental units that were not registered with the city. And our goal was to improve the transitory housing and life safety aspects of rental housing to prevent loss of life, and to improve the living conditions for the same. Um, during that time, the, the city agreed that the first three-year cycle, we would focus only on the life safety aspects of the property maintenance code. Um, so we weren't doing screens and paint and gutters and downspouts. We were doing exiting and egress windows, and water heaters, and furnaces, and structural integrity, those types of things. Um, during that, that same period now, I'm gonna go back for these three years. Um, in two thousand fifteen, we registered nine thousand four hundred and five units. In sixteen, that dropped to nine thousand seventy-five, and this year, we're still progressing, because we're still getting registrations in, but we were, as of last Thursday, at eight thousand seven hundred and five. So we've, we've dropped about eight hundred units. And in discussing this with landlords, and going through the initial phase with the owners of these properties, there were as many landlords that sold their properties outright, whether they were, uh, sold outright or on a land contract. Um, they just did not want to fix these properties up. So that, that put some of the stock of housing into owner-occupied housing again, and those people are taking pride and invested in their property. Or, or they simply did not register them. So, the other day, we had IT run a record for us from Pot County, and we still believe there's about five hundred and fifty properties that are in Council Bluffs that are not, that are owned but not owner-occupied. And as time permits with our, um, inspection staff, we are doing analysis of those records and contacting them, and, and trying to resolve that part of this problem. Uh, the rental housing division has inspected five thousand five hundred and thirty-two units out of eighty-seven hundred and five totally registered this year so far. Um, that's sixty-four percent of the total, uh, that we allocated. So, um, we have three months remaining, and that, that'll get us up to the, a little bit over the sixty-six percent we needed to get all of these done in a three-year cycle. Um, as we go through, I, I gave you a, a copy of the, um, checklist that the inspectors do. And to date, in this almost two-year period, we've done five hundred and twenty-five thousand thirteen inspections of items in rental housing, out of the five hundred, five thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dwelling units. Um, you'll notice, though, that in two thousand fifteen, there was a seventy-four percent failure rate. In sixteen, there was an eighty-eight percent failure rate, and seventeen a seventy-two percent failure rate. Um, those sound high, but I, I hesitate to say that when you look at the percentage rates of pass and failure that are attached to each one of those a hundred and three inspection criteria that we use. They're all above ninety-five percent. So when an inspector goes out and he cites a house for one deficiency, or we find a bad one, and he cites him for fifty, they still fail. Um, they get thirty days to correct, and sometimes they get more to correct if there's a lot more violations in the house. We, we go through that whole process, and try to work as much as we can with the landlords and the tenants as they're in there. Um, at the inception of this program, we felt that we could accomplish this in this three-year cycle. Um, really, the duties of a rental inspector, rental inspector are very, very varied, quite varied, I should say. Um, they do inspections, they do re-inspections. Uh, we have public relations that we do, both in the field and in the office, on the media, as we go through that process. Uh, they conflict resolution. I mean, sometimes it, it's just not very fun in the field for these people. We do phone complaints, we do in-person complaints, we have court, we have leave and vacation that we have to, um, judge by. Uh, we do research on non-registered violations. And really, the hard part of our job is sometimes we come across children, or the age, or people that are just living in deplorable conditions, where we have to bring in the police, or CPS, or Heartland Family Services to get them alternate places to live when the conditions inside these houses are that bad. And we do run into those. Uh, non-registration, that's, that's a, kind of a big thing for us to talk about today. In two thousand sixteen, we found fifteen single-family dwellings that were not registered as rental units, and three multifamily dwellings that were not registered. In seventeen, so far, in the, uh, nine months that we've done it, it's nine single families and two multifamily complexes. And again, we had, um, about five hundred, five hundred and fifty that we still need to go check on. Uh, we just, quite frankly, haven't found the time to do that. Uh, we are gonna work harder to do that, and, um, Jamie and Maureen are gonna refocus to try to go out and get that analysis done, so that we can get this, this process completed. On the revenue side, in two thousand sixteen, we, we brought in two hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Um, we spent a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two there. Uh, we were combining expenditures in building and, and rental housing at the same time. We broke them out in the last budget cycle. And our income in seventeen was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven fifty, and our expenditures were three hundred and fifty-two thousand. And that's just for the rental inspection program. That doesn't incorporate, um, the lawyers, the policemen, the firemen, everybody else that's involved in this process when we go through it. Um, so a, at this point, what I can tell you is that, uh, I believe we're being very successful in, in our establishment of safe housing in Council Bluffs. Um, our revenues, we're, we're gonna be running a thirty percent deficit. That's, that's where we are, and, um, that's what you can expect us to, to do.
I, I wanna, uh, thank you, Steve, for the update. I, I'm, I'm very impressed with the, uh, the increasing levels of safety. And when I talk to, uh, residents, particularly those of very limited means, um, it, it really is a lifeline to them, and, and even a lot of, of landlords. There were good, a number of folks who didn't support legislation, and, and a good number, I'm pleased to see, have come around to see the, the wisdom and trying to get rid of, uh, competitors who would, uh, kind of skirt the rules and take advantage of folks who don't really have other options, like, like, folks like me and others would have. Um, I, I, I know we're running a deficit, and I, and I, I remember as part of the original proposal, we had, we looked very closely, Sharon and I, at making sure the program would run and cover its own costs, so that the businesses who were in this industry would pay for it, not the general taxpayer. And, uh, we, as one of our many compromises in that legislation, lowered the fees. Uh, and I'm not criticizing the number we came to. It was the best guess at the time, uh, as to the amount we thought where it would break even, and, and it hasn't. Um, I, I don't regret trying, because we, we definitely didn't want the program to, to be seen as a moneymaker, because that isn't what it is at all. I do think, as, as we look into the future, we'll have to. I still strongly believe that an industry ought to pay for itself, and not the general taxpayer. So I, I do think we'll have to, hopefully, we'll change that. We'll, we'll get a sufficient majority support to, to change it. So, to, to raise the fee a, as needed to cover the cost of the program. Kinda like they do in my profession, whenever there isn't enough money to cover all the various funds that cover when lawyers, uh, I have to pay into a fee every year. I imagine my colleagues do. Uh, several hundred a year, even in Iowa where I don't practice currently. Uh, I pay into, to, to cover all the various, uh, fees. Uh, and, for example, in my profession, to cover when, uh, when, uh, relatively few, and hopefully few lawyers who would short their clients. It helps cover the rest of us, pick up the slack, and pay for those lawyers who, who take advantage of people. And, and so there, the costs, I mention that, because it's the cost of doing business, and we don't expect the general taxpayer to pay for the, the legal profession. Uh, and so I don't expect, so hopefully, we'll have majority support to raise that fee. If not, the, you know, the law is that the general taxpayer will have to subsidize the costs of that business. And, and I'd hope we'd consider sticking with the spirit of that law. But I, I wanna thank you, and if you, if you take back to all the folks in your office, uh, it's, it's, it's bringing great, great results, and I see it from people talking to me. I see it in my own. I, I live in an older neighborhood, and with a lot of rentals around me, and I, I just see the pride has gotten so much better. And I, and I, I wanna, I wanna thank you, because your people are what makes the difference.
Thank you. Uh, one, two things, Mr. Watson.
Yeah.
Our, our commitment was to find the individuals that, that are violating the law. They're not registering their properties. Uh, again, we stated before, I will state again today, a, a great number of the landlords are very fine people, and they do very good business.
Indeed, absolutely.
And they maintain their properties in very good shape.
Mm-hmm.
For, unfortunately, when, when government passes laws, uh, most of the time, it's not the great preponderance of, of the good people that are violated. They're, they're the ones that have to abide by the inspections, even though they were doing the, the job before.
Yep.
Um, so we are going after those individuals aggressively, as aggressive as we can.
Mm-hmm.
We have yet to cite a landlord for failure to comply. Um, one of the things that we committed to do also was to cite renters who damaged property once they've gone through and got a certificate of compliance. Uh, we have cited one renter, and I anticipate, the more we go through this process and get houses that have certificates of compliance, we will be citing more tenants than we do landlords, and, as it should be. When you have a contract with, with an individual to use your property, and you damage it, you ought to be held accountable for that.
And thank you, if I may, that, that reminds me, that was one of the many compromises in the law. There was, in my view, a very, in the prior law, a very silly and ridiculous, uh, provision that made the landlord always responsible for the, the, the malfunctioning smoke detector, even if the landlord did everything right, and put it in, and it was the tenant who disabled it. And then, even if you had absolute proof, the landlord wasn't at fault, landlord got the ticket.
Yes.
And that was stupid.
Yes.
And so that was one of the many things that, when we spoke to landlords as part of this process, that even the folks, and many of whom didn't ultimately support the law that passed, but we, we reached out to them, and we tried to put everything in it we could, to, to be reasonable to them too. And that was, I'm glad to hear that there's a focus on putting the responsibility where it ought to lie, because the tenants ought to be responsible for the parts that the tenants control.
That's correct.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Steve, one of the things there was great concerns about was that a lot of people would be left homeless. Do you have any idea how many properties had to actually be closed or, um, condemned, uh, and people moved out of them?
Off the top of my head, Sharon, no, I, I wouldn't want to answer that without, uh, delving into the records. Uh, not very many.
Not very many, okay. Um, you know, I was looking through, this is pretty detailed. Um, one of the questions I had, uh, that I was happy to see that, you know, I feel like it's gone a long way towards safety, but, um, it was just the coding of it. I wasn't exactly sure. When it was, um, fire, it was one of them that had so many, and I thought, I wanted to just kinda clarify on that. Uh, fire resistance assemblies, um, there was a really high fail rate on that, but I'm wondering, and I know a lot of landlords didn't know they had to have the fireproof, uh, insulation and the pipe runs under the sink. Would that fall under that category, and would that be why that's so high?
Uh, that applies in multifamily. The, the fire rating for penetrations of fire-resistant assemblies.
Yeah.
Um, in your own houses, for example, um, there's a fire requirement between the garage and the dwelling unit. Um, we modify that code to make it block or drywall in a one and three-eighths inch solid core door, but it's still a one-hour fire-resistant assembly, both vertically and horizontally.
Yeah.
Um, so it, it applies in, in all instances when we do that. If it's a duplex, there's a, it, the code used to require a one-hour firewall between them. Now it requires a two-hour wall between them. So, those are just inherent construction practices that are built into, um, the hazard that exists when you have dwelling units that abut each other.
Sure. So, does the, uh, in multifamily, the insulation and the pipe runs, is that, are those that were cited for that? Does that fall under the fire resistance assemblies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure that's where I was seeing those, because I know that, I certainly didn't know that was a requirement, and I know several landlords that had no idea. So, um, I'm glad to see that, uh, those are being taken care of, and we all learned a little something on that, so. Um, the only other thing I wanted to share with you is I've, uh, had, actually been approached by a couple of landlords that were adamantly opposed, and, um, they said that, much to their surprise, it was much better than they expected it to be. And I think a lot of that, from my conversations, have to do with your staff. Um, the, the feedback on the inspectors has just been over the top as far as, uh, being polite and helpful, and, um, not vindictively looking for little bitty things. They, they seem to be doing the job and doing it well, so, um, great feedback on that, and I, I appreciate that.
I will certainly pass that on.
Thank you.
I have some, I have some questions, if I may. Um, first of all, I, I, you're giving us a status report here today, or were you looking for council action on a particular question?
No, sir. We have brought forth an amendment to the definition of family.
Yeah.
That you will hear separate from this presentation.
Yep.
And that really, uh, comes from, comes out of the necessity to, we created the ordinance. This was something that we, we wrote in, that really, uh, we should have taken a little bit more time to look at, because the definition of a family can include many different things anymore.
Sure.
And our goal is not to impact families, um, or to not call your aunt your family.
Yep. And, and thank you for, for helping with that, and that's just part of growing pains with any type of new, new law as we work through things. Uh, so, so again, I appreciate that. Okay, so, uh, so that being a, a, uh, giving us a status report on, on, uh, otherwise how the rental inspection program is working, and you referred to, uh, operating at a deficit. And I was going through some, some of the numbers, uh, not only what you supplied to us, but out of the budget binder, and they don't exactly add up, but not far away. Um, looking, it, it appears to me, and please correct me if, if you have a different perspective, but looks to me like the vast bulk of the, of the program costs for your entire inspection enterprise comes from personnel costs. And in looking at, uh, at the budget binder for, uh, for the next fiscal year, have, uh, uh, for the rental inspection program, we, we have total compensation and benefits programmed at about three hundred and fifty K. And we have, uh, total compensation and benefits for the other part of the, I guess that would be the commercial, uh, and, uh, and owner-occupied inspections. Uh, that total personnel cost was three hundred and six, uh, I'm sorry, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. As I recall, when we set up the, the program, you, you hired, you hired two, two additional inspectors. Is, is that, is that correct?
Two additional inspectors and one permit technician, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and how many individuals are conducting inspections, uh, on the non-rental side?
Um, at present, I do not use my housing inspectors to do that. I'm focusing on rental inspections. Uh, there may be times where we get a complaint, that we do send one out. I really try very hardly, or hard, to use the building inspectors to do those, when we do the owner-occupies. But, to be honest, sir, we're, we're, we take those on a complaint-only basis.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm s- so again, I was just trying to try and figure out why the, why the personnel costs for both sides of the program put together are so, are so high.
Well, I have four building inspectors, um, a permit technician, and myself on the building inspector's side.
Okay.
And on the housing side, I have three inspectors and a permit technician.
And the budget is projected out for next year's expense. Steve's giving you a historical, so that would include salary increases, which is why it doesn't exactly balance out.
Okay, yeah, well, the, what, what he gave us was a fiscal year eighteen proposed budget. Um, okay, um, very good. I, I will probably have some more questions. I'll follow up with you, uh, offline. Uh, and I also, uh, in anticipation of, of today, I, I shared the, the statistical in, information that you gave us with Mr. Angaroth. And, uh, and he came up with a number of questions as, as, I contacted him, because I was having trouble figuring out what all the numbers meant, and, uh, and I think he was having a little bit of problem with that too, so he may be contacting you offline on that too, just so. He has an understanding of, of what's going on, if that's, if that's agreeable with you.
I work for the public, sir. I'm there eight hours a day.
I, I appreciate that very, very much.
And so just doing the math, at nine thousand units, about a dollar eleven generates ten thousand dollars. So, you can kinda figure out, to balance the budget, what it would take. And I can't remember exactly what you told me the difference was, and so that's why I did approach it from that way, but for...
I'm sure in the next six months, you're gonna be getting information from legal, uh, with respect to, um, the situations we're involved with, with, um, a lawsuit on actual cost to the city of, of what it takes to do this job.
Are you referring to the Carlo Lemer?
I'm just referring to a lawsuit that's been filed against the city.
Okay, yeah, oh, okay. I just wanna make certain there wasn't a new one.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's on the previous, I believe that was on the previous rental inspection scheme, if I remember correctly, was it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, anything on the consent agenda?
No.
Uh, just to, uh, clarify, I think it's a pretty minor thing, but, uh, the, uh, the annual, uh, financial report, I know that's done in response to, uh, to the annual audit process, and this is our first year to have it done by a private audit firm, as opposed to, uh, the state auditor doing that. Um, I take it that, that this report then is, uh, goes back to the, the state auditor? Or, or what becomes of this report once it's?
Yeah, I assume that's the case. Patty?
Uh, yes, the state does receive two copies of this report, paper and online, so they have it. It will be available, it should be available soon. If it's not already, it's been sent to them.
Okay. Then it's up to them, and to reconcile against the report that's turned in at the end of December. Uh, there was a separate state report filed?
The annual financial report?
Yeah, in December.
Um, no, I don't believe they would reconcile between the two. What we file December first is, are, are the numbers that are available and believed to be correct at that time?
Actual for sixteen.
Pardon me?
Yeah, the, the actual for sixteen.
Right. Um, because I believe this was their first time performing the audit. The audit was delayed mainly, they completed their other clients first, then came back and finished it, and therefore it was completed late, and there were a couple of more adjustments. But, um, I believe it's fairly close to what was reported to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a specific question?
Uh, no, I just want to
Okay.
Know what becomes of this after, after it's turned into the state.
Okay, yeah, no, they publish it.
And it's, just for clarification, it's our responsibility to estimate it as close as possible on December. It doesn't always foot exactly to the, to the actual year-end.
Correct. But, yes, I don't think, it'd be very unusual if it was a hundred percent correct at any time that we report on December first. It's, um, the audit is not required to be completed by the state till March thirty-first, yet we have to report financial numbers the prior December. So it is difficult to make sure that those are a hundred percent correct.
And they make, they find and make corrections, and, and this is the final?
Yeah, they had a few adjustments this time, just different ways of looking at things, and we can just, you know, I can answer any questions you have on those.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
You should see the federal coffers. I have to look at.
I bet.
You too, I imagine.
Any other questions on the, uh, consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
Um, I have one question on the development agreement, but it's for Brenda or Rose, whoever wants to.
Mm-hmm.
It's really only a semantics thing that I wanna make sure I understand. Um, in our packet, the write-up indicates two condo towers. But the development agreement indicates a rental tower and a condo tower. So I just wanted to know if the rental tower is going to be a condominium form of development, or if it's gonna be an apartment building?
Okay. Um, we have the developer here, and, um, if you would like, I did not specifically place them on the agenda to speak to you guys, but if you would like to give them, um, the opportunity to do that, I will turn that over to them, and they can do a quick presentation to you.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Which at one point made a difference. I'm not sure that it actually does in today's property tax world, because I think apartments end up being taxed the same as condominiums, but...
I think so too. It's just the form of ownership. I'm just trying to determine if it's gonna be, you know, individually-owned units, or...
Good afternoon.
Property ski.
I'm Jay Noddle. Do I have to give you my address now in this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-two eighty-five South Sixty-seventh Street, Exarban Village, Omaha. I'm here on behalf of both Noddle Companies and Argent Development LLC. Um, the plan has been for there to be one of each, a condominium tower and, um, an apartment tower. Condominium tower would go first. Um, but we do wanna have flexibility in this plan, such that if the condominium tower is wildly successful, the second tower could in fact be a condominium if they chose to do so.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
Anything else?
Roger had a question.
Yeah, I don't know if it's for, for you, Jay, or for Rose, or... The, the fifteen-year TIF at sixty percent, um, I know you guys obviously ran the numbers, and I was asking Matt. I don't know if it's, just from my knowledge, and I guess everybody else maybe too, is it... I, I struggle with TIF every time it comes up, and everybody knows that, but is it better for, for, whether it's you guys or the city, if instead of doing fifteen years at sixty percent, we get it on the tax rolls at ten years at eighty-five percent? What, what's better for you guys, or what's better for us, and I, 'cause I, I, you know what I mean? I don't know if it's better for us to be at ten years, and at ten years, you guys start paying a hundred percent? Or if it's better to break it out longer, or what the, if there's a financial impact to you guys? Uh, 'cause I know, obviously- Because I know, obviously, we've gone over this several times, whether it's a hundred percent at ten years or, you know, whatever it is. I just don't know what the best option is for both sides.
You know, in this case, I'm probably not as qualified as Argent to answer that. I, I would say that's the kind of equation that would take a little bit of study. But knowing Argent and Mr. Zetsman as I do, I think they probably felt that, albeit a lower percentage, but a longer duration was probably better.
Well, I told Roger, from the city's standpoint, it starts putting revenue on the city's income statement earlier.
More revenue sooner if it's a lower percentage.
Yeah, right. And I, as I said, I, I didn't know if forty percent, you know, after, forty percent of the eighty left after the debt levy, if it's better to get it over fifteen years or ten years shorter and then pay a hundred.
I, I think in this case, what's, what's probably best is the fifteen-year duration. As you know, it's shorter than some of the TIF packages we've worked on, so. But they, they could certainly run the numbers. I don't know that it can be done immediately, but.
No, and, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm just trying to understand for the future.
Okay. We can keep looking at them in the future, too. Hopefully, we'll have more.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the public hearings?
On five B, we, we had a discussion last week or last meeting about Wallace Avenue. And I think that there's a general consensus that that was something that needed to be taken a look at. And I went out there and slowly drove over the street as to not totally mess up my, my new car. And, and in, I, I guess it kind of becomes a question then of, of what makes the most sense from a public works standpoint? Whether or not we are improving or resurfacing that, that road after the development goes in or before. I can, I guess with all the construction material going in there, it'll, the road will become even more fun by the time it's finished.
Well, I think we would encourage people to come in on the finished side of Wallace. We have been talking about Wallace for two or three months.
Good.
There is a, if you've been down in that area, you can see that there is an ongoing street project on East Manawha that includes sanitary sewer. And they can't just jump around to get to Wallace, because it's probably the worst street down there. It needs work today. Pat Miller has looked at it and has a couple ideas how to temporarily fix it without putting a lot of money in it. But really to progressively work our way over there, I think Matt told me a month ago or so, it's maybe two to three years from now by the time we get there. And so it also has a spring that runs underneath it, which causes a problem. But we will get there, but to put in a new street this year would break up that ability to connect with the sewer lines.
Well, that, that makes sense. And so you think that there might be a possibility of a temporary fix to get through the, the construction phase? And then, then go for a smarter, more permanent fix?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's been a long, it really is more than a year. We had our first complaint on it last year and a different citizen complained this year. And then somebody else who lives in Manawha, who really doesn't drive that, pointed it out, too. So we've been talking about it for a while.
Good.
The progression.
We're proposing to do something that's going to last two, three, four years.
Okay.
And then try and get the total reconstruction programmed into our neighborhood program.
Okay.
So it's not really temporary, in, in a sense, it's intended to last two or three, four years.
Okay. Well, I guess that, that's how I would see temporary, but you're, you're seeing a, a partial fix now and a more permanent solution after, after the construction is finished, which makes perfect sense.
Well, and it really doesn't have anything to do with the subdivision construction. It's more timing of the neighborhood rehab that we're working on in Manawha and, and how we can do, like Matt says, get the pipes to go in the right direction.
Okay. Okay.
That's really what's determined.
Terrific. Okay. Glad the smart people are working on it, appreciate it.
Anything else on the public hearings?
Uh, let's see. Just a couple other minor questions on resolution about the seven hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds. See, the public hearing on that was set through the publication process. Nothing was set by the city council on it, is correct or? And, and on the, on the staff package, the resolution indicates that the proceeds are dedicated to public works projects. Then I saw the nice article in the, in the Nonpareil. And it said that the bonds would be applied towards repayment of the debt in the debt levy. And so.
I, I don't. I didn't see any article that said that, so I can't address the article. The seven hundred thousand is, is in the CIP First Avenue Reconstruction, two hundred thousand. Eleventh Avenue Reconstruction, four hundred and fifty thousand. That's six hundred and fifty thousand. There are issuance costs and so bond counsel rounded it up to seven hundred thousand, just to make sure we covered the total cost. But it doesn't have anything to do with debt.
Good, good enough. That was, that was my, my only question. That makes perfect sense to me. Thank you.
You betcha. Ordinance is on first consideration.
I just, just curious that on the definition of family, was there, were we having some problems with the definition?
We did, we looked into, I asked Steve, he came in the office one day and he said, you know, we, we have nine thousand registrations. At that time, we were about eight thousand registrations and, and we know some people have gotten out of the, the rental business. But we, you know, sat around and discussed it and said, I don't think eleven percent of the people got out of. So are there people that have chosen not to register? Are there? We exhausted the review to be fair to everybody. I mean, if everybody registered and there are ten thousand registering, it probably would mean that the program would pay for itself. And so I asked him to go back and look and one of the things they do is go to the county website and see whether or not the property mailing address is different than, than the property in question, which is typically an indication of, of somebody else renting the property from an owner. But we've found and, you know, I think we covered some things like trusts and stuff. But there were situations where families weren't paying rent to the owner of the property. They had a family member own it and, and there was no income coming off it. And so Steve came in and said, we've got a little different wording in Bellevue that, that I think is better language than what we currently have. And so I asked him and Roger did the same to bring it forward, so.
The only question I've got is the up to four unrelated people and any related children. I just want to be clear that, so if we've got a house with two unrelated people can live there and be considered family and then any of their children, do we need to specify children, minor children? I mean, you could end up with, you know.
Forty, well, I've got a friend who's sixty that lives with his mom.
I say, I don't think, yeah, because depending on like, what if it's a special need situation or what if, I don't think you want to put it limit on the age because you, you know, I mean, and some kids, they're going to live there through college, so they're not minor. I don't know, I don't think you can really put age on it.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Those four, four adults? My concern is, you know, eventually you could get, not that we would have a lot of fraternities and that would be a small one, but, you know. Well, it would be, but, you know, my, my concern would be that, you know, I, I would want, I would, the, the intent to be clear that this bona fide family, and I realize that's difficult to define in the law and for the most part, I agree with that. But, you know, I don't want it to be a situation where four unrelated people are renting a house and suddenly they've found a really clever way to not have to, the landlord doesn't have to register. You know what I mean? I, I don't want it to be over inclusive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all. I want to just be sure, because I'm sitting there going, okay, you got four unrelated people and they each have five adult children. You know, you could really.
You know, Steve, what, can you, because they need you on, and I'm supposed to talk into the microphone. Can you kind of tell us what the thoughts were in Bellevue and, and how that worked?
Yeah, we have Bellevue University down there, obviously. But one of our engineering technicians, his daughter goes to South Dakota University. And there's four young ladies living in a, in a single-family house.
Yeah.
And that's a scenario where that would not be permitted or would be considered a, a rental thing. Or we left out aunts and uncles and
Sure.
Right.
Those types of things. And, and really, those are inclusive. That's what, what it really brought it to a head. We had an individual that was running to his aunt and he didn't want to pay the rental inspection fee. And it made perfect sense to me that, that why would you register if you're, if you're, and she was getting it for free.
Right.
Well, and, and I, and I can tell you, and I, and I wrote the language. And, and as I recall, and I don't have it directly in front of me, but, but I believe that that was copied from some previous language. I agree, it needs to be updated. It wasn't broad enough. At the time, there were bigger fish, fish, and I, we were working on tweaking various, as you know, lots of, lots of language in that, in that whole chapter eighteen or title eighteen of housing. But I guess my, you know, if someone's genuinely, if they're four unrelated people renting a house from someone, to me, that's not so much. And I, I would like to have some further discussion about it, because I, I don't know if that is a per se family. Because like, if, if I, if, if I were to rent a house with three other people I'm not related to and I was renting it from a landlord, it, it was my intent under the law for that sort of situation to be subject to inspection. But if somebody's living in the house their aunt owns and they're not paying rent, you know, no, I never intended for that to cover. And I appreciate language can always be made better.
We simply brought this forward as an alternative and I'm sure there's
Oh, yeah, so I, I just encourage like,
Especially this should happen on it.
Like, like definitely two unrelated people living together with children of one or, or the other or both. That definitely ought to be included in this day and age. I don't want to accuse that, that situation of not being a family, because I definitely, that was not the intent. I, I worry about above two. And I, I just, I'm not saying I'm automatically opposed to it, but I, I just want to think about that. But definitely two and relatives, that, that definitely.
Talk about it and under second consideration a little bit more.
Yeah.
If we, if we make it second with that, I, I'm sorry, would that, would that, would that make it more restrictive? Would it have to go back? Let's say it progressed to second.
I think it's more restrictive.
Yeah, it's gonna be other way.
You could change it.
Okay.
We could change it.
Okay.
You could always bring forward like some different language.
And I don't think there's any time constraint rush on this deal.
No, there isn't.
No, it, it ought to be updated. That, that's something we didn't think about. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I totally agree with updating it. The instance you gave with four people in it, renting a house that are in school together, you know, four girls renting. If they're actually renting the house,
Yeah.
I think that should be covered by the rental inspection. I mean, we want them to be safe.
The choice of words on my part, sorry.
No, no, no. It's, we, we get to ask questions, we don't have to answer them. So, you know, it's obvious, as you know, as you know. And I stand on your side in my day job, so I can, I can relate.
Yeah, I'm fine with the two people up to four. I just want to think through those scenarios of how we, you know, it's about health and safety and making sure that people are, you know, covered. And I, I can see really quickly, we're four unrelated people renting a house, it's still a rental.
Definitely two. I, would you agree with that? Definitely two unrelated, because there are a lot of folks who, for whatever reason, it's a free country. They, they haven't formally married and, and we have common law marriage in Iowa. I, they're a family, I'm not going to say they're not.
Maybe I'm trying to, maybe I'm thinking too much into it, but I mean, if they're
It's, it's an occupational.
One thing I think you need to kind of address here, the only reason, the only issue we're trying to resolve here is whether or not they have to register as a rental property. This is not to determine what a single-family home is or whether or not this arrangement is appropriate in a R-one neighborhood.
Oh, indeed, 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 indeed.
And actually, the legislature's going to address that for you, so.
I probably just need a good example, just so I can get it. Because I'm thinking, you know, obviously, if it's family, that's, you know, exempted. But I'm, I guess I'm trying to figure out why having any unrelated people renting a home from you.
Well, if you got Aunt Suzie who's living with baby mama Joe.
Sure, but Aunt Suzie, you're related to.
Or baby daddy Joe.
Yeah. So you'd have to have one.
My math didn't work real well.
But one of the people there has to be related for the unrelated to apply.
I'm, I'm an old guy, so as you go back in time, back in the sixties, out in Washington, state of Washington, there was a, a gentleman, I believe his name was the Bagwan Rashnesh, and that's when the communes were really big. And I think it was the city of Seattle that sued, sued them for living in these communes. And they tried to use family as the definitive case. And I believe the Supreme Court ruled that ten people not related by blood, marriage or adoption was considered a family.
Isn't that, isn't that a lot? And I, I think there is a case, and I don't remember exactly, but something like that. I, I thought there was, and I'm not saying necessarily it needs to be in our law, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. There was some sort of test, though, whether that was true.
Yes.
I mean, you couldn't just, I couldn't like buy an apartment house in town and say that all these unrelated people are living with me. I mean, there have to be some.
And the sixties were a really tough time.
Well, I, I'm going to have to take your word for it.
Society club, returning to story.
The Supreme Court cases that Steve's talking about are when a city actually tries to find what a family is for purposes of zoning. What we're doing here is just defining
Finding what a rental.
Are we going to say this is more of a rental deal than a, a non-rental deal?
Right.
Because let's say if, if a married couple are living together with their kids from one or both of, 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 of the spouses, we, we make them register if they're, even if it's a single-family house, right?
Correct.
So I guess maybe, and I'm confusing the two issues together myself, the difference between. So if, if we do it there, I, I don't want to give unmarried people an advantage over married, too. So I, and I, and I didn't separate those two out and I appreciate you keep, keeping reminding us. So I, because those are different. I kept thinking of it in the context of, you're right, the court cases and just the modern society of there are certain things where we, we are limited, and I think rightly so, in limiting what a family is defined as, as opposed to the nineteen sixties or earlier. Let's pick the nineteen fifties.
There you go.
For a stereotypical period, you know, the, the classic nuclear family. But does that really have a place here? I, I don't know. Let's talk about it.
Take another stab at my math, if you get
Uh-oh.
Aunt Suzie who's not married Joe, but Suzie's got two daughters and their husbands live in the basement. Then you got four unrelated parties, so.
But doesn't, doesn't it come down to, though, whether they're paying somebody else to live there? Isn't that the key as to whether it's rental? Like, like if I, if I'm staying in a house and let's say, let's pick an extreme example, for some strange reason, somebody's going to let me live in a house for free and I'm not related to them. And there's nothing illegal going on. What, I have to throw that in. Some, it's a free country, somebody could do that, it'd be weird financial. But even, if I'm not paying to live there, I don't think our laws currently is written, requires it to be registered as a rental. Or, or am I mistaken?
It's the definition of what that family is that causes the problem.
Right. Right now, it's, it's like more limited.
Mother, father, brother, sister, some, and that's it.
So if somebody else is living there, you'd have to register right now, though.
No, but doesn't it trigger, I thought it triggered based on whether you paid someone to live there. I thought that's what triggered the rental inspection. If there's no monetary exchange, then I don't think it's a rental.
Correct.
Am I?
Well, that's not necessarily the way our current code.
Not current, but that's the way this one would read, correct?
It's very much closer to that.
Yeah, if there's no, if they're not paying utilities or paying your rent, no monetary exchange at all.
I, I just, I, I want to get it, I want to write it in a way, address those concerns, definitely. But in a way that doesn't, if it's literally four unrelated, let's pick college kids. It's easy to pick on, right? Four college kids living in a house that they're truly paying, it's a bona fide, it's a genuine rental to somebody else. and none of them are related to, so pick, pick a, which I think is most cases in that situation. I think they ought to still be a rental.
Right.
Because if a married couple's paying for it with their kids, it'd still be a rental. So I don't, I don't want to overdo, if, you know, if we wouldn't, if we wouldn't give that, that, if we require married people to live up to it, I, I think we're perhaps going too far if we suddenly give people who are not married a better deal than people who are married.
That's the great thing about first reading. You have all this opportunity.
Sure. No, no, this is a great discussion, because there are always things can be important.
Yeah, because I mean, really, the way this is written right now, for literally unrelated people not related to me at all in any way, I could rent an apartment to and not have to register.
I'd be okay with looking at two or three.
Sure, which, which would cut out, you know, a lot of, a lot of the rentals in older neighborhoods, as many colleagues know, a lot of them are in single-family houses, and a lot of us, including myself, are, a lot of us around, a lot of our neighbors are. And so I'd hate to see when, you know, if you're, because we have a lot of older houses that have been converted into apartments, and that's fine. I just worry that part of the reason for this law was that buildings that weren't designed as apartments to begin with, if we remove them from the inspection scheme, it will take a lot of the bite out of the law of inspections, if we're only inspecting, like, think more than four, you truly, you'd pick up the apartment houses, things that expressly were designed for that. But you wouldn't pick up a lot, which are a lot harder for those entities not to ever register, because they're obvious, you know, forty plex. It's kind of hard to not, to hide that rental. But I worry about the smaller ones, and then, and when folks I talked to when we were, we were drafting the law, that a lot of these times are people that don't have two nickels to rub together, you know?
You're right.
And so I worry that, and they don't have other options, so let's talk about it.
Tied to somebody in the, I mean, I understand the whole four unrelated people, especially based on the, you know, daughters with their husbands. Yeah, your beautiful example.
Or just expanded related.
And honestly, you know, it just seems like to me that somebody in that unit has to be related to you. Now, if they have other people in there that aren't related to you, okay, that's different, but at least one person in there should be related in some way to be.
Well, you can always bring, I mean, so we can bring back some different language for next time.
I mean, couldn't it be like family within, I don't know, like, a third degree of consent, some, some sort of broad
Seven degrees of qualification.
Like, you know, when it would pick up.
Let's, let's just talk about it before next consideration, but yeah, we can look at more.
I don't want to write it quite like that.
Let's, you've got two weeks of essentially, just think about it after tonight. This gets kind of the ball rolling.
Yeah.
And I don't think anybody'd be too offended if we tweaked this language.
Nah.
No, no, no.
Not a bit.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Any others on, ordinances on first? Anything on the resolutions?
Yes, on the North Twenty-Eighth Storms or Rehab, I know we've talked about, about that, and I know that you guys have had as much fun working on this project as, as anyone. And, yeah, to somewhat disappointed to see how the sole bid on that and how far in it came, came over. And I don't know a good, a good answer for this, because as you explained to me, this is kind of a got-to-do project, and it, we've kind of been put into a bad position here by, by the state, if you will. So I, do you see any, any options here? And I guess what I'm really, the question really concerns the impact on the CIP, because the staff package says, well, the additional cost will be put into future-year CIPs. Well, we just approved the CIP, and the additional cost wasn't reflected in there. And if we're, if we're carrying over costs into future-year CIP for what has already been done, then we're kind of returning to the practices that we had before, where we were paying for cost overruns with more bond offerings. So have you guys re-looked at the CIP and come up with some addition, with some additional perspective?
You asked several questions there, so I'm going to try to remember them all and get responses to all of them. I'll address that one first. So
Okay.
Because the DOT offered to allow us to make payments over three years, my thought was, we have an opportunity, because the funding is not in the current-year CIP or established in the current CIP, that we have an opportunity in future years to make adjustments to accommodate that additional cost. So maybe that means elimination of a different project. But because it would be in a year beyond the current year, we would have that ability to make adjustments in next year's process, or the following year's process.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't have to actually make the payment to the DOT till two, three years out. So we have an opportunity. That was the only reason I put that statement in there is, it is obviously more than the funding we had planned for this project. You notice the project number is a fifteen project number.
Yep.
We have bid this project, we attacked, we've actually attempted to bid it four times, this being the fourth. The first two were significantly overestimate, worse than this one. The third time, we got no bids. So we've, we've basically made all the adjustments we believe we can make. It's a difficult project.
It is.
We've made a huge investment in a large pump station of about eight million dollars. In order to get the true benefits of that station, we need to take a larger diameter pipe to that station to actually relieve that, the drainage basin within the neighborhood. So if we don't do the project, we don't realize the true investment we've already made.
Yep.
We could postpone it, but again, it's not going to get cheaper, is my belief.
Yeah.
The requirements are not going to get less. We got to this point is that, previously, we attempted to do it an underground installation without actually cutting I-29 open. The contracted community doesn't want to do that job. It's too difficult and yet too small to warrant their time and effort. And that's what the bids reflect. We're talking about a crossing between two and three hundred feet. When they bring, the mobilization required to bring a machine that does a large enough tunnel, in this case, it's not even a bore anymore, it's really a tunnel.
Yeah.
When you're talking about eighty-four to ninety-six inch diameter, under I-29, near the levee, there's a lot of risk associated with it. It's a difficult job.
Yeah. It's an engineering feat, really.
Right, and that's what the contracting community told us in their bids, which the first one was about twice the estimate. The other one was, oh, let's see, so the first time was two-point-nine million dollar bid on a one-point-two million dollar estimate. So we, we didn't even recommend a board of that one. Second one was two-point-eight million on a one-and-a-half million dollar estimate. Then we got no bids the third time, and this time, we're at two-point-six versus one-point-nine. So we closed the gap, but one of the challenges with the current plan is that we're actually have a lot of overhead related to the interstate. So we have to pay for additional traffic control and monitoring, because federal highway requires us to do that, because we're affecting the interstate system. We're also paying the DOT to provide inspection services as part of the project, and we're paying for incentive to get, to reduce the time lane restrictions are in I-29. All that extra cost is not really associated with the pipe project, but is a necessary evil of open cutting I-29. So we weren't, we're not, by DOT standards, we're not allowed to discuss the bid with the low bidder. But we could discuss it with all the contractors we know that did not bid and chose not to bid. Basically, all of them said, there's plenty of work out there. Why would I do this pain-in-the-neck job, you know? We're fortunate, Peterson is obviously highly involved in the interstate work currently going on around town. You see their trucks everywhere. So they're already mobilized in town. It's not a significant effort for them to temporarily move up to I-29 and do this job.
And it'd be better to do it now, wouldn't it, before the more permanent type improvements are in that area?
Well, and based on our research, the bidding climate is not going to change within the next year as far as available work, similar type of work. And prices don't ever seem to go down, so.
No.
Again, I am not happy about the cost of this project, but I don't see it getting any better. I think we've met the best we're going to get as far as the cost of this job. If we can't afford it, then we can't afford it, but my only suggestion was, there's an opportunity to maybe look at reducing other projects and somehow making it fit in our currents, or our next-year CIP, not our current CIP.
Well, and as you explained it to me, yeah, this is a pretty important project, and maybe worth, you know, once, once you guys kick this thing off to maybe see if we can't get a little press coverage about just how big of an undertaking this is. Because it, as you explained the project to me, wow, this is a lot to have to carry off, and, and when you look at all the overhead that's been added, just because of the way things are, it's, it's a remarkable thing that has to be carried off. And sometimes I'm surprised that maybe we're able to do it for, for this cost.
Yeah, and, you know, someday, once we're able to expand into the neighborhood and actually add the pipes and add the necessary storm sewer, we're going to see that, a true benefit, and those residents will see it when their street doesn't flood, the intersection doesn't have two feet of water in it when it rains. You know, all those things will start to be visual and apparent to the, to the residents, and what is a relatively large storm sewer basin on the north end and the west end of Council Place?
Yeah, it's a tough area. Thank you.
Other questions on the resolutions?
Let's see. Just a moment, please, I'm sorry. So on, on G, I know we covered this a little bit in the last meeting about the police bond issue. And I, we talked about the twelve-point-five million dollars entry for the, in the CIP, and then there's no successive entry for, for follow-on years. And, and here we have, the bond offering here tonight is for seven-point-five million dollars as opposed to the twelve-point-five, so I was just.
So this is seven-point-five for this year, bond year is calendar year, would be issued prior to January first. If we keep it under ten million, we can do what's called bank qualified, which allows banks to bid, more competition for bidding typically would drive down the price. So we've got CIP projects, I think the total, two-point-four-two million, and then seven-and-a-half million is what we need to initiate construction and get us through until next year, when we would bond the twelve-point-five, which is the total, seven-and-a-half and twelve-and-a-half of the twenty million estimated cost not to exceed that was approved by the voters. And so that is
Got it.
Two thousand and eighteen for the twelve, and this is two thousand and seventeen for the seven-and-a-half.
Okay, I assume that that was the case, and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You betcha. Any other questions on the resolutions?
Wait, before we, can I ask Dick? I think he said it was okay. Since we're all here together, I figured this is like the easiest way to handle the Iowa West Foundation letter that we got, so we can openly talk about it. I didn't know how to do it, so I thought it's probably better to. Okay, I, my, what I would like to do is try to see if we could get a public meeting with Iowa West Foundation, so that all of us could sit down with whoever from the board. I don't know if it's everybody, I don't know if we need a small, I don't know how they want to do it, but
Yeah.
That's what I would like to do, is maybe request if we could have a meeting, so we could all sit down and go over kind of like why the decision was made, what our goals are. Maybe by then, the city could kind of have draft plans, so they can see this is what we approved, because I know they said they didn't know what the resume entailed, but we knew, but I don't know.
Well, it's, no, that's a good thought, and I've been thinking about this somewhat, and there, we had another recent suggestion where the Pot County Board of Supervisors wanted to meet with us, have a off-site or a, or a, or a, another separate meeting in order to discuss with them. So I thought, well, perhaps we ought to re-explore that idea of maybe setting aside a, a day or a couple of evenings or whatever it takes, so we try and accomplish both things. Because, yeah, it kind of, kind of strikes me, whether it's from the, either the Pot County Board or the Iowa West Foundation, how we have, not a clash of cultures, but a difference, a difference in cultures and how each entity goes about evaluating questions and doing business. So it would provide an opportunity for us to sit down separately with those entities and just talk about, okay, what are the priorities? What, what are, what are the rules of the road that you operate under? And here's the rules that, that we have to operate under, and how can we better communicate on business moving forward so that we can use resources most efficiently? So that's just kind of a thought that I had, if we could
Invite their board members.
Yeah, and it would be, it would be a public, public meeting on the record. And it's, it's an opportunity to share with both of those entities as we consider business going forward.
Yeah, I'd be fine with including the county board. I mean, I don't see any, because I think the hard thing is just, yeah, figuring out how, because I know they were upset that we didn't talk with them first, but I guess, to me, I didn't know we're in the process, we would have, we had to make a decision first and then go from there, but maybe we can brainstorm, you know? I think it would be worth a try to try to get everybody to sit down.
You know, I always stand ready and willing to enter negotiations or discussions and do my part. I think it's important to remember, kind of, rental inspections being up today, I think is a good example, because that was an issue in which three, but predominantly two of us, you know, spent a great deal of time coming up with the plan and engaging with all the different constituencies, many of whom ultimately didn't support our bill. But that's fine. We'd reached out and we tried to meet as many of their concerns as we could, and for some folks, it wasn't enough, and I appreciate that, they disagreed. As part of that, though, it was kind of incumbent on us who were pushing, and I didn't expect those who disagreed with the bill to, to do the heavy lifting. I expected them to engage in the debate, which, which those who were against it, you did, you fulfilled your part admirably. But I didn't expect you to do the, the heavy lifting of, of the proposal, and so, and so on this, I'd encourage the, my three colleagues who, who did, who, and I was on the losing side of, fair enough. I appreciate how it works. I'd encourage you, though, my advice remains, there are kind of two aspects to any, and I guess I'm Mr. Process, so here's, again, my, my free advice to you. There's procedural issues, and then there's substantive issues, okay? So substantively, I'd encourage you as part, if you want to try to meet the concerns of those like Iowa West and their concerns, and like concerns I may have, or like Sharon may have, I'd like to hear some more about, I appreciate the current plan as passed is to have phase ones. From my perspective, limited improvements, I appreciate they're much better than they are now, I'll grant you that, throughout the phases happen. But, but like, for example, I just, for the sake of example, like, I'd like to see, we have such a limited corridor there that there's, there's so little public area to improve with greenscape or what have you, because you can't certainly take away any more property, because people's front buildings are right, many of them. But like, like, concerns I would have, and I would certainly never speak for Iowa West, there are concerns on this one, and I disagree with them on a lot of things. On this one, I think my views are fairly similar, just so happens. From my perspective, I'd like to hear, like, would you be able to get the businesses there to voluntarily agree, like, the first ten-foot, to, to come up to the modern design standards of the decorative lighting and the beautiful things, so that we can have the green space and the beautification on the sides, if we can't have it in the middle? I mean, you're more likely, frankly, and again, I'm certainly not speaking for anybody else, but just from a negotiating point of view, you're more likely to get people like that, who could write a check for seven million, to agree to aesthetics if there are other of these pieces of putting back some of that green space on the sides. You're more likely to get me back.
See, we don't even know yet if they're willing to do that, though.
Well, and that's, and that's my, and that's my point. I kind of need to know more. I need to know more, kind of like, and I'm not saying you haven't done your lift, heavy lift, I just need you, from my perspective, just to understand where I'm coming from. And I always think it's great to be frank with people, so you know, I just think that's respectful. I need to hear more from you, to go back to those folks and hear what, again, what they're willing to get, I phrased it before as give up, and maybe those are the bad, bad choice of words on my part. of words on my part, what they're willing to offer to the situation so that people like us, and I'm not, I shouldn't speak for someone else, people like me and, and I imagine other entities out there like Iowa West who've expressed their concerns, it sounds similar to what I'm saying, I'd like to know more about that from a substantive point of view and then procedurally, the kind of other side of the coin so to speak, is, you know, how, how best can we put all this back together, how do we get people in the same room, how do we, how do we build that, that, that shared sense of trust in the mission, the joint mission and I, I'll need some assurances, I imagine other people might, about where exactly we're going, but, so I think there are two sides of the coin, I, I think if we just go to them and talk at this point, we're not on the same page and maybe we never will be, but, but, but I, I'd encourage you to, to reach out, like to see if more can be done aesthetically in that corridor and if it can't, that's going to make it really difficult for, for me.
But I don't think we should reach out to people until we know if they're even, if they're not willing to fund any of it, then it's a moot, I mean, to me anyway, I feel like then we're wasting our time kind of in the land, because we don't know yet if that's even an option, if they're saying we're pulling it all together, then why are we even, because then it's not even something to entertain.
Sure, but, but a 501(c)(3) private foundation, they, there's a limited amount of negotiation they can enter into, it's, it's more so, and I think properly so, rather than them, them being in the nitty-gritty of designing it, I, I just don't think that's proper.
But they helped design the first one, right?
No, we designed it.
We designed it, but we can give them.
And then they came to us, see, if you asked them, and I had some experience when I used to run a nonprofit before it disappeared.
Our consultants, our consultants designed it.
Right, we can present them the design of it.
Okay, their consultants also work for them, Chroma and...
Chroma work for the city.
And I'm just saying, in my experience with them, and this is the legality's and you can ask them and I'm certainly not their attorney, but in my experience in the past with getting grants on behalf of nonprofits in the city, we are in effect a nonprofit, they will come and, and they will decide whether to fund something when you present a plan.
Which we have, or we can have.
Sure, and I'm saying I think we need a bit more to it if you're going to try to convince them to fund it, if you, if you try to get my support you, for it, you would have to do more than just the current plan, I'm just, if you go to them with the current plan...
And just out of curiosity Nate?
Yeah.
They're, they're going to fund phase one, right? So...
Yes, but the, the deal as a whole, and I don't want to reopen the whole discussion if we can help it.
Me neither, and that's why I want to ask them, like, what else do you want besides...
So here's my thought on the deal, and I hear what Al's saying, that was a, Justin Schultz is the new chairman of the Pot County Board, they had a board retreat, he called the city with a week to go and said, I'd like to have you come to the meeting, well, that didn't work for anybody, we all had stuff scheduled and, and so it makes sense to put that meeting together and I think that's a whole separate deal and I, I know Al reached out to him today, I, I think it makes good sense, we should do that.
Absolutely.
The other deal is though, that, and I think the nonpareil got it way wrong, when I said, I don't think it's my duty today to go in there, I think one of the three of you need to reach out to them and ask them how they want to do this, because if you send the message up the street that we're calling you down on the carpet and bring your whole board and we want to talk publicly, I don't think that's going to go well for you.
Yeah, and that was precisely why I suggested kind of the, the off-site or the...
But at some point when you make it an open meeting, you get, anybody and everybody can come in and, and cheer and...
I, I'm generally trying to give you good faith advice on that, I think your current...
Like I think we, I would rather us as a whole, talk to them as a whole, like I don't want to, we are separate, so you can go talk to them, you're going to...
I don't think it's going to go well for you.
Well, and, and to be fair, and, and I'll speak very kindly of, I think a point Al made in the paper and I think he's right about this and so I think it goes to this point, I think if, there is a difference between what a foundation does and what the government does, I, I don't want to get in, and, and he can tell me if I'm putting words in his mouth, I don't want to get in a situation where anybody, and it's not picking on Iowa West, anybody other than the people's representatives decide what we're going to do, now whether other people choose to fund it, that's obviously up to them, I want to, I want to have that good discussion, but I don't want to be in a room where we spitball ideas and ask them to decide what the project should be, I really think we ought to know what the project should be and work with them to see if they'd be willing to go along with it. I just say the current plan, I don't think, and again, I certainly will not speak for them, but I would, I would eat my hat if they were to agree to the current past plan. I can't, I don't support it, I appreciate, we act as a body, so the body does it and of course I respect that, I mean, I can't, I'm not going to try to over, you know, a coup or something, I respect that we act as a body, I personally don't support it, I, and I suspect based on what they said, they're going to want to see some movement of what else we're going to add to that area to meet their concerns, I think we as the people's representatives and, and you working with the various interests, because you, you brought it forward and again, I'm willing to work with you, but just like the rental inspection, it wasn't my bill, it wasn't my proposal, I, I shouldn't have to do the heavy lifting because it's not something I believe in, you should because you believe in it, if you bring those to the table and you find a way to try your, your best getting, getting something that might get us on board and that might get them on board, I think you're going to have, and I genuinely believe it, I think you're going to have a better chance of them funding it, now if that's fundamentally different than what you want to do, then don't do it.
My, my thought is...
But I don't think they're going to fund the current, I just don't.
My thought is, to me, and it's my opinion again, we, we took a small portion out and I'm okay with phase one, obviously we all, we all are, we voted yes to proceed with phase one.
Pursuant to the master plan at the time, the, the only other thing I'd say is...
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm okay with phase one, so in this meeting, I think what she's saying is, you have some different ideas that you want besides what's in phase one, I think, me, to go to them and say, well, I want to do something different in phase two, well, no, I'm okay with phase one, I think we should do that in phase two too, so if you have different ideas that you want, I think, it, it's kind of chicken and egg, I guess, I, I don't know, you know what I mean, like...
No, I don't honestly.
Well, you have different ideas.
They wanted the master plan.
It'd be like me expecting, and I, forgive me because you, you run the council, forgive me, it'd be like me expecting you, when you were, and you had principled reasons to be against the rental inspection ordinance and I'm not questioning that, but it would have been like when difficulties arose with, with, with many landlords who didn't like certain pieces and, and we went out and worked with them and were able to get some on board, many we couldn't, but, but it would have been like me, what you're suggesting with the greatest respect would be like me expecting Melissa at that time to have done the negotiation for me for a bill she didn't believe in.
Because it took, we probably had a hundred hours.
You didn't, you didn't do that and I didn't expect you to do that.
What we're saying is we, right now, our vision based on the feedback we had received was to go through the rest of it essentially like phase one, the only thing we've changed, only thing that we, feedback we received felt to change was remove the medians, everything else would remain exactly as it is, now, what I would like to know is, is there something else, you know, I don't know what Iowa's is thinking, I don't know if there, no matter what, I mean, that's...
Well, that's what, that's what I was saying, I, I, honest, and if you don't want to do it, you don't have to, but I think somebody needs to make a phone call and say, how do you want to proceed with this deal?
Right, I mean, that's why I want to know if they're going to find out what we're...
And like I say, if the only options to say, you come to our house and you stand in front of everybody and explain it, that'd be...
That won't be your intention, but that'll be how it plays, I've made that mistake many times.
How can we make it public, those minis that want to attend?
It's never worked for me.
That's what I mean by public, like I want it, if all five of us want to go, we, you know, I don't know how legally to do it.
I've lost...
I'm not sure they want to do that, so like I say, I think that somebody needs to reach out, I mean, I can do it, but, but frankly, I feel like I'm somewhat tainted because I'm the guy who wants the medians and, and I don't want anyone to think that I'm trying to manipulate anything on the deal, I, I just want it to happen organically and, and if they, if they have concerns with the people that voted contrary to how they saw it, I think that one of the three of you or two of the three of you ought to reach out to them and say, how do you want to move forward, maybe they want to come to an open meeting.
I'll call them tomorrow.
I don't have a problem calling them, I, I just think, again, if I call them, I'm okay with phase one, if you call them or we call them together, you and I, it's a different, your perspective and our perspective versus just our perspective.
I just want you to understand.
I guess it's what I think she's saying.
I was just hoping we could legally find a way so that we could all, if we want to, not, not, it doesn't have to be formal, I mean, even if we sit down in their boardroom, I don't care how we do it, just so that we can have as many people...
It's got to be public.
Right, but we don't, I mean, I'm not saying...
But I just would ask them, do they want a public meeting?
And they may not because they're...
That's what I would like our next step to be, is ask if we can do a public...
They don't have to have a public meeting, we do.
Correct, but that's something I would like to ask them, could we do it in a way?
I try to.
I do understand what you're saying, but you have to understand that just because you're okay with segment one, they're not.
I know that the way that letter was written, they couldn't come with a decision, so some are in favor and some aren't.
But I'm saying, the issue comes down to, I understand what you're saying Roger, definitely do, you're fine with that and if, and if one of us wants something more to that, then we should work on getting that done, but, you know, I want, I wanted the medians in and that was my position on it, it hasn't changed, so it's not for me to reach out and make alternate agreements, you know, to try to find a new agreement with Iowa West Foundation, I would be very clear, very publicly clear, I want to see the rest of the beautification done, I really am very hopeful that something can happen to where an agreement can be had between Iowa West Foundation and the city, but I don't, you know, for me to reach out to them, I don't have anything to reach out with because I want the original plan.
There, just a couple of things, just, just to clarify, so we're on the same page, I, yes, I like the, that, I like and voted for phase one, but that was pursuant to a master plan that had medians in the next phases two, three, four and five, so, so to be fair to my position, it was, I think you have to take it as a whole in context, just to be fair.
I understand what you're saying.
And, okay, and, and the other, the thing is, as you, as you look at the master plan as a whole, okay, I believe there are two of us, I, I think, and now I'll speak and she can tell me if I'm wrong, but based on what she just said, there are two of us who would, who would like to go back to the compromise and, oh, the other point I wanted to make about the medians is, I, I, I am a bit frustrated to be honest by the fact that because we compromised and reduced the medians from 80% to 20%, the fact that there's so relatively few left is being made as a point as it's not that big a deal to get rid of them, but we already gave four times and I, I just want some acknowledgement, it's not like, it's not like there was a 50/50 exchange in the current deal, we went from 80% to 20% to try to accommodate all sorts of different interests and the 20% went to zero, so our position is at zero, so just so you understand, I know you have the votes, you got through your position, but just out of respect for our position, we went from 80% to 20% in a deal passed last year and that went to zero, so it, so when you say it's not that much left, it is to us because it, it makes us, makes me think in future negotiations we have as a council, discussions, why should I ever give an inch if you're going to take a mile from my perspective, so when you say that, that, I don't think that helps our relations moving forward, just, just so you understand, the other thing is, since the two of us would vote, I think, to restore the compromise, all right, only two and two doesn't win, I get that, but the three who, who wanted to go and have phase one, the master plan as it is current law, and I'll grant you that is our current law, I obviously have to respect that, to have that plan apply to all phases, one through five, all right? Now, if you want to try to get, just, just advice, you can take it or, or not, obviously, but just genuinely, if you want to try to get funding from an organization, now, if, if you are not willing to add more things into it that would be at least arguably comparable to that, the odds of them supporting it are probably about the same as, as Sharon and me changing our view, I just, just, you know, I, I just don't think us sitting down, I do think clearing the air would be great in general, but will that change their mind? I really don't think it would.
We don't know until we ask.
Right, I mean, that's the thing, I would like, we have to have a...
But based on their letter, but, but if they come back and say no, then the question, and in my experience, like back when I ran the neighborhood center, whenever I wanted them to fund an idea, I'd come up with some harebrained idea and some of them probably were, at least, at least a few, and I'd go run to them with an idea, they would say to me quite rightfully, and, and it pains me to admit that, you need to come up with a proposal, you need to come up with your backers, you need to come up with the ideas, come with us with the idea because it's not our job to come up with the idea for you, it's our job to vet it and if it fits our mission, we fund it, and, and I worry that the current proposal without any some changes to get what you want, which was a lot of the concerns, which I've always respected as valid concerns, I think other ones outweigh it, but, but your concerns are valid, if you don't put other things in there to address some of those concerns similar to what we have, I don't think you're going to get them on board, now you, we can have the meeting, but if we have a public meeting, all get together, I think, and that's not your intention, but I think they're going to see it as a game of high noon, or however you want to, and I've made that mistake myself, so please learn from my mistake.
The reason, I guess the reason I haven't reached out is because I thought we would have this conversation today and see what these guys thought.
Fair enough, fair enough, absolutely.
These guys thought, I mean, that's why I haven't reached out yet, because I thought all of us together at once is probably better to talk about it than...
The letter I read, the letter I read wasn't hardline at all.
No, it wasn't.
I, I think that if you talk to them and say it's medians and, or out and everything else is in, you know, that may be enough to get them to say, all right, just don't change it again on us without talking to us, but, but I, I gotta think it makes sense to ask them how they want to have the meeting, because I think if you just send the message, you're coming to our house and bring your whole board and sit in, in front of us, that's not going to go well, that's, that's going to be, I, I think somebody needs to call and say, how do you want to move forward on this, we, we want to work together and...
And if you would, if you would reach out to the folks whose interests, kind of like what we did with our bill, if you would reach out and see what they're willing to give up, like what we did in our bill, if you could bring some ideas, and I do think honestly that heavy lifting's on you because it's your bill and it's your proposal, if you want to try to get the funding, now if you, if you don't, that's our decision as a body, we don't have to do it, they don't run the government, but if you want that...
You know, we all want the funding, you know, you know we all want the funding.
Okay, well then you're probably going to have to be willing to compromise to meet, to meet your goals and their goals, kind of like how our bill got through.
But I think we need a starting, I mean, I think to even to do that, that's going to be so far, that's going to be like weeks from now if we try to do that, I don't think we can, I mean, I think we need to reach out, so I think we need to...
Oh, I agree, you need to reach out.
We need to do something, I mean, we need to try to...
But, but if, but if you sit down without a new proposal, without this buy-in, so, because from their perspective, if I were them, and, and you know that this is our job, we try to think what is the other side thinking in a negotiation, if I were them, I would be thinking, how, what, what's it going to be and what, to your point, what assurance do I have that, you know, we can't bind the future governments, but those of us sitting here today and for as long as any of us continue to do so, what, what assurance do they have that we're going to stick with this or whatever we, we decide to do, I think that's a fair point from their, from any funder, whoever they are, I think the more you have different groups, like say the adjoining business owners on that block, whose legitimate concerns you raised, the more, if, if they would agree, and I'm just speaking hypothetically, there are other ways, it's not, it's not my idea, but if they would agree to certain things voluntarily on the side with the limited space they have, I recognize, certain things like that, certain things that would get that green space because even beautiful concrete, some ideas that you can bring to sit at the table to show that, you know what, if the more interest groups you have buy in publicly to an idea, the more assurance they have that it's not going to change in six months.
I agree with you and not to say that I haven't thought about the businesses doing a little more green space, all new ones, right, not to say I couldn't come up with that, but to me, it was like, well, if this is, if some of, if Nate is more open to the businesses doing this and then he'd be more on board, it's like, well, let's sit down with Nate, when Nate says that, then I know you're on board with it, versus me saying, well, let's try this and then we bring it back and you're still not on board.
Well, and there's all the rest, keep, keep me, keep me in the discussion.
Right, does that make sense to you?
Kind of like, and again, I'm sorry, I'm picking on you.
I'm not afraid to work, Nate, I'll do, I'm, I'm just telling you, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it does, but, but I also understand, again, like with Melissa, I, I kept you in the loop as to what we were doing, even though you always had your principal position and I respect, again, I respect that, I just make it as an example of, of what worked for us.
No, I understand what you're saying.
But, but I didn't expect her, and I, and I wouldn't have expected her to go to the landlords and landlord association, let's say, and come up with the ideas because it was my bill, I was trying to get it through, plus frankly, I didn't want just three votes, which is unfortunately all that I got, but I wanted it to have some consensus, even more importantly than any of us up here, I wanted more consensus in the community so that whatever got through hopefully was, was, was decent, but also had some staying power, that enough people thought of it that suddenly six months later, because just in general, I hate law that does this.
I would agree.
You know what I mean, I like stability, even, there are plenty of laws on our books that I don't like, but I'm not going to try to change many of them because there's something to be said for, some things have been around 50 years, it's stable, everybody knows what the rule is, you know, there's something to be said for that, and so that, that was the main reason to reach out to those groups, was to try to get something that'd be stable and through changes and, and seats, it, it has remarkably stayed stable.
Well, I'll...
Today's discussion on that I think shows that.
I'll talk with Melissa and/or Al and reach out to them.
And I want to be open, I'm not telling you to do it all, I want to be...
And then make sure you work with Dick so that you don't violate any opening of stuff.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'll be very careful, we were always very careful, just like, for example, Lynn worked with us, but we never, all three of us worked together.
Actually, so maybe we should have, Jody and Dick should be the two to kind of try to, I just, I mean, I don't know how...
Well, it just depends on how they structure, but however they say they want to do it, I'd check back with Dick and say, this is what they said they want to do, what, what are the landmines, what do we have to worry about?
Absolutely.
Because really whatever you guys come up with is more than we have.
Because if you go two, it doesn't matter, but if you go three, then...
Right, then we have a problem, and that was why I meant by public meetings, I want Right, then we have a problem, and that was why I meant by public meetings, I wanted to let everybody...
No matter how they say it, work with Dick and...
But, but I want to reiterate, I am open, you know, it may be to the point, and I'm, again, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm picking you, to the point where I legitimately just can't vote for it, just like Melissa legitimately couldn't vote for my bill last time, and I respect her, because that was her view.
Yeah, I'm not...
But I tried, you better believe I tried.
At this point, there's nothing to vote on.
No, no, no.
There's nothing to vote on.
But just, just to let you know that I think, I think, and I could be wrong, but I think the more you do to try to meet the legitimate concerns of the interests you brought forward that caused you to change the law, and, and mine, which I think in this instance are probably almost the same, if not identical with theirs, if your goal is to get funding, I think you have to try that.
Well, I will reach out and see what the next steps are.
See what they say, and make sure they work.
And I'm happy, again, I'm always happy, I've offered many times, and maybe you don't want it, and that's fine. I'm always happy to give that process view, because whatever we do, I'd love to see buy-in if possible, I'd love to see process work, that, to me, is the most important thing in any of this. Maybe I geek out on it, but, so my door is open. I do, but my door, I do, I know I do, but my door is open on that, so please.
Thanks for the offer. Anything else?
I do think who is going to kind of be tasked with trying to set up, I do think we should try to do that, set up something with the county if possible, just to kind of...
Um, I think, yeah, Justin will probably do that, I don't know.
Just can we do like one of those, like, um...
I'll talk to Justin, I don't know, to whatever.
And I...
They just need to give us such a timeframe, not seven days.
Either time...
Well, I think we should, I mean, if, like, Jody could send out one of those, what's it called?
Doodle?
Yeah, then we could give them some dates, maybe we put it on, you know, then that way, we're picking dates we know work for us, and then throw it out and say, you know, here's dates.
And this is my, my first attempt to herd the cats, if you will.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, maybe we could do it.
I wanted to make sure that we kind of had a consensus before we started reaching out to them and say, okay, what are your best working parameters, dates, place, you know, conditions on the, on the meeting, whatnot? So just to kind of get the, get the process moving forward, because the more of these types of discussions that we have with stakeholders, so that we understand each other a little bit better, that's going to be a, a gain for everybody, so that's, that's the whole...
And I don't know how much you guys did before I was on council, but I've, I mean, I know all the county supervisors, but I really haven't sat down and talked with them much at all.
I think we talked the other day, we got two, maybe three 2080 agreements, and there are things that, that make sense. I don't know if you know, the city of Council Plus spends $3.4 million to finance the patrolling of the county roadways. Now, we pay all our police, they don't contribute.
We subsidize the rural areas, yeah.
It's 4.2 million, and 60% of that comes from the taxpayers at Council Plus, 66%. And, you know, some of those things probably really need to be talked about. I get it why we would, we also pay a fee for the jail, but we fund the jail in addition to the fee we pay, and some of those things, Don does some work for the health department over there. I mean, some of those things need to be talked about to save the taxpayers money.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure they probably have issues they want to discuss with us.
I'd like to see more.
Much the same as the mayor. I imagine they do, and I, and I haven't heard them from them, and I really should.
And we've all talked about it for a long time, I've talked with several of the supervisors for a couple of years now, about how we could combine forces, especially in areas of purchasing, if we put our heads together, you know? When you're talking about buying salt for the winter, why are we not considering doing that at a bulk rate that saves all the taxpayers?
The irony was, and supervisor's not there anymore, we had that conversation with him, and he said, "No way, we'd never do that." And then he tried to enter into an agreement with Douglas County, so, you know...
Well, fortunately, we can move beyond it, and...
I look forward to the opportunity to work with them and start seeing how we can save some money.
Should we try to just do a doodle poll as a starting point?
They are 70% of the county.
And then we can let you, then you'll have that, then you have something to go back, like, hey, here's some dates, that would be great for us. Does any of this work for you, and we go from there?
Yeah.
My sense is, and you might want to check with Melissa, their secretary, but I think they meet on Thursdays, so it's probably a Thursday afternoon we'd be looking at.
People believe that, I did.
Late, I don't know, whatever works, but...
Yeah, you guys are, whatever way, but yeah, sure. Do you want me to send that out to just the five of you?
The good news is, most of them are in town, so it isn't like you have to...
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
We've got to get this straight.
All right.
All right.
Ooh, we get to eat dinner.
But when supervisors actually have that...
Anything else?
Do we have something else?
I don't think so.
If we do, we do. If we do, honestly, if we do, we do.
No, I think we're good, aren't we?
Are we good?